Okay, I want to welcome everybody to our July 11th Board of Supervisors meeting for Lake County. Today, I am the Chair, Moke Simon. I'm the current Vice Chair, and our Chair is out of town, so I'll be handling the meeting today. I want to thank everyone for joining. I want to thank you for your patience as we get started. As custom, we will start with our moment of silence. Does anyone have a moment of silence? No moment of silence. I would like to dedicate today's moment of silence to all the gun violence, the folks that are affected by that throughout this country, not only the ones that have lost their lives, but the communities that have been affected. It's something that is affecting every community around this country, and today, that's what I'd like to dedicate the moment of silence for. So please stand as we... Okay. Brian, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to our number four item. Are there any extra items not appearing on the agenda?
I have none.
No extra items? No extra items, Michael? Okay. That will enclose that item. Number five. Number five is our consent agenda items. Consent agenda items are usually non-controversial. What I would like to do is see if we have any items that need to be pulled from the Board, and right off the bat, I do have some that I will pull at this point. 5.19, 5.20, 5.22. And there is a note on here, 8.2 also. Will that be pulled, or will you pull that later, Lloyd?
We can pull that later when the closed-session items are announced.
All right, thank you. All right, I'd like to open up the Board Supervisors about the A.
Yes, I'd like to pull items 5.14 and 5.17, please.
Excellent. All right, if there are no more from the Board, I'd like to go and open it up to the public. Anyone in the room would like to pull an item on the consent agenda items? Seeing none, do we have any hands up in the Zoom room?
None.
Chair, at this time, we would like the pet of the week to come forward under this item.
Under public input?
I'm sorry, under public input.
We're not under public input right now, so we're in consent agenda. You're a little ahead of yourself. Confused me right there. Threw me a curveball. All right, thank you very much. So we'll have you guys start in just a minute here, once we get through the consent agenda items. So seeing that there are no items from the public to be pulled, we'll go and close the public input, and we'll bring it back to the Board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 5.14, 5.17, 5.19, 5.20, and 5.22.
A second? Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Excellent. Moving on, we are in our timed items, so we are at our 6.1 item, 9:06 a.m., public input. So we will go ahead and start with our animal control and pet of the week. So go ahead, folks.
Good morning. I'm Officer Downey with Lake County Animal Care and Control. With me this morning is Mama. Our kennel staff has affectionately started calling her Nana. With me also is Officer Guard, our newest animal control officer with the county. Nana is approximately a two-year-old shepherd mix. Nana came to us with eight newborn puppies. Unfortunately, her puppies didn't make it, but she was a very fierce mother. She was a very protective mother and a very loving mother. Right now, we're trying to find her a home, and she's been with us for approximately two months now. We think that she has come full circle. She's a great dog, gets along with pretty much everybody. We would request that if you do have pets in the home, that you bring them in to meet her, as she is a little finicky with who her friends are. Some people she likes, some people she doesn't. But she is an absolutely fantastic dog, and we think that she'd do great in any home. If you have any questions or would like to come and meet her, please feel free to come visit us at 4949 Hellbush Drive in Lakeport, or if you have any questions, please feel free to give us a call, 707-263-0278.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Okay, with that, we're moving on to our public input. Andre, I see you in the audience here. Come on up.
Yes, good morning.
Please give me your name.
Andre Gazeek. So I'm the owner of the Mount Santalena Vineyard in Middletown, purchased in January 2022, and the reason I request to speak is I think there's an issue you can make a big difference here. I received a notice just 10 days ago, PG&E plans on cutting two ancestral valley oak trees in my place. Here's a picture of one of them. And they say they interfere with the infrastructure. I have here a picture of their infrastructure, and you can see it's a little piece of rusted metal that actually needs replacement. I was notified six months ago they wanted to replace their transformer anyways, so I don't understand why they want to cut these trees. But let me tell you more about these. They are actually five feet in diameter each, and it seems with the rains this winter, you know, they've kind of started growing a little more, which I suppose is good. So the infrastructure they talk about is old and clunky and needs replacement anyways, and I think these directives they rely upon to cut the trees is misguided because their equipment is no infrastructure actually, it needs fixing, and what they call vegetation is actually large historical trees. In most places, in California, these trees are actually protected, so I don't understand what's going on here. You can't cut valley trees like that. Research shows cutting them is actually not a solution because just a few months later, that wood actually is worse for fire risk. You can read about that, it's very well documented, so it's just a super short-term thing they want to do. On top of it, PG&E, they want to cut and just leave these trees in place, so it's going to be a massive problem for me to deal with. There's only two or three weeks left. You know, I came really early. This notice is June 30. Last Tuesday was a holiday, obviously, so I came the first I could. I'm not complaining that they cut them because they haven't cut them yet, so there's an opportunity to stop them, if you would help. I mean, they could bury these wires just for 100 feet or redirect the line. All of this is very affordable to them. To note, you know, if they would cut them, it's actually possible to replace them by bringing live, you know, grown trees, cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. So they can tell you the damage these guys are just about to do, you know, destroying real value. Finally, and this is kind of brand-new, I was discussing with my neighbors last Friday in Middletown, and I was told these two trees may be of historical significance for Wapo culture, believe it or not. Apparently, some years ago, some large artifacts, a mortar and a grinding stone, and perhaps more, were found just under these trees. I just wanted to mention that. So I'm no historian, I cannot guarantee this is true, but I strongly believe it is because the individual I spoke with seemed to know local history quite well. If nothing is done, this is all going to be destroyed within a couple of weeks now, I think, because from reading at PG&E, once I got this notice, they can come within three weeks. I really do hope my plea will be met, and the Supervisors will promptly send a cease and desist letter to whomever is in charge around here at PG&E. I cannot do it on my own, you know, the phone number here, I tried calling this guy, but he's obviously not in charge, and I called the agent a number, put a complaint, but that's not anybody that's really in charge. Thank you very much for your attention. I'm going to be here if you have any further questions.
Thank you, Andre. And, you know, just for the community's, you know, public input is just the ability for the individuals to do it. It's not on the agenda, but you are in my district, you know how to get ahold of me, and that would be my suggestion, Andre. You don't have to wait today.
I'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more public input in the room?
Nothing on Zoom.
We've got some coming up. We'll need you to fill the form out, obviously, if you're going to do public input. Public input is for agenda items not on the agenda today. You can fill that after.
Okay. Sorry. Michael Wagner. I was coming to bring something forward that I think is important for everybody, especially as far as timing goes. The regulations for the temporary structures for drying for cannabis, it was brought to Task Force, and I believe Task Force has been through it, and with harvest in a couple of months, I'm just bringing it forward as something that does need to be looked at in a timely manner. I don't know if it's on anybody's radar, so I wanted to bring that up. That's it.
Thank you, Michael. Do we have any hands up in the room? In the Zoom room?
No hands in Zoom.
All right. With that, we're going to go and close our public input item, and we're going to move forward to our 6.2 item. Our 9:15 a.m. presentation of proclamation honoring Brian Sumpner for 40 years of devotion and service to the County of Lake, and I'll be presenting this today. And I would like everyone that's here for this ceremony to please come up. Come up front, please.
Where do you want me, Moke, up there?
Yeah, come on up. Everybody up. Stay down so we can get a picture. Come on up. Everybody up front. Okay. Proclamation honoring Brian Sumpner for his 40 years of devotion and service to the County of Lake. Whereas sports editor Brian Sumpner has served as the voice for athletes for nearly 40 years, sports are an integral part and success for many students. Whereas we honor Brian Sumpner for this extraordinary achievement and dedication to accuracy, fairness, and professionalism in his career, and whereas Brian Sumpner brought special events and tournaments to Lake County, improving tourism morale for the benefit of Lake County. And whereas Brian Sumpner was the first sports editor in the County of Lake, covering five high schools independently, among numerous other county sporting events. And whereas Brian Sumpner has earned the respect of the community, going above and beyond his responsibilities for nearly four decades, he's commuted from Sonoma County and worked nights, weekends, and holidays without fail for the duration of his career to provide the gold standard of sports coverage in Lake County. Now therefore, we declare the appreciation for Brian Sumpner's devotion and service to the County of Lake and desire that there should be a permanent record of gratitude for his community's service. Adopted this 11th day of July 2023 and signed by the Chair, Moke Simon. Vice Chair.
And one more.
Do we need to turn a little so we can get everybody?
Michael? I can't see you.
Oh, wow. It's terrible.
Are you there? Okay. Is everybody smiling? Yes. Great. Perfect. Thank you.
Excellent. Would you like to say anything, Brian?
Lower Lake High School rebuttal. No, thank you very much. It's weird when you say 40 years, it really doesn't seem like 40 years. I started here when I was 23, and I was just out of San Francisco State, a few months removed from graduation, and I answered an advertisement in a trade magazine and drove over the Hopland grade for maybe, I think, the second time in my life, and I'm thinking, I'm not driving over this road unless I have to. And I did live in Lucerne for about a year before I got married, but the rest of the time, I commuted from Cloverdale over the Hopland to Lakeport, and I won't miss that part of it. But I will miss a lot of the people, and I have royalty here today, Bill Foltmer, who has 301 career wins and is like 11th in the state of California. And just I've met so many great people. I knew no one when I moved up here, absolutely no one, and I've made lots of good friends, more friends than I made in my hometown. I feel, you know, as comfortable in Lake County as I do in Sonoma County where I grew up, and I owe that to a lot of good people and a lot of coworkers. Most have moved on, some are still here, Bob Manana and Mandy Fader. He's one of my very good managing editors, Tret Bishop, who has graced our newspaper with his photos for longer than I've been at the Record B. And I just appreciate all the people, fine people I've worked with over the years, parents, coaches, even some administrators, not all of them, but some of them. And I hope that the Record B carries on the tradition of sports coverage, because I'd hate to see it lost. It's positive news, it's good news, it's local news, and there's a steady stream of it for about 10 months of the year, so you're never lacking for anything. It's never a problem of finding something to cover, it's trying to cover all of it or as much of it as possible. And I will miss certain parts of it. I will not miss the deadlines every day, print, now social media. I will not miss social media. I will not miss anonymous emails. I know the Supervisors know all about this, so I'm not telling them anything new. But yeah, I'm just going to try to find something fun to do. I want to create a Lake County Hall of Fame for high school athletes, coaches, and all people involved in high school sports, and that's what I'll be working on with some really good people, and hopefully that'll launch sooner rather than later. And other than that, I'm just going to relax and just try to follow Lake County sports from afar as best I can, and I'm waiting for Bill to win 45 more games so he becomes the all-time public school coach for wins in the state of California. He just needs 45. That's like nothing, man. You can do it. You can do it. But thank you very much, and I'll let you get back to the real business of running Lake County now.
So I want to say something. Oh, sir, please go ahead first.
I just want to say I may have been the first person Brian met down in Lower Lake Field, 1984, and we've been together ever since. He works a reporter. I also have helped him do some sideline reporting for him over the years, and Lake County is going to lose a wonderful thing. No, I mean, I don't think people understand the time and energy he's put in to the sports programs here in Lake County. He's treated every school equally. There was no favoritism. When things needed to be reported, he did it, and as you know, you had to call your scores in to get it reported. He couldn't be out there at every site covering every game. And if you gave him the information, he printed it. He's just, he's an awesome reporter, awesome friend, and I've had 40 years of joy being able to share all this with him, Lake County sports. Thank you.
Brian, this is Scott DeLeone. I just wanted to thank you on behalf of, I'm going to say, tens of thousands of people who have scrapbooks in their homes. I have two of them, one for my son and one for all the teams that I've coached, and I just want to thank you on behalf of all those folks. There's a lot of history for over almost 40 years, and I just really appreciate your dedication, your patience, certainly with me as a coach, calling in scores late from Fort Bragg, and we all know how that goes, but just want to thank you again on behalf of everybody that has a scrapbook in their home as a result of your work. So thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I'm a better writer than I am a speaker. I had the pleasure and honor of working with Brian for almost eight years, and the benefit for me was to get a best friend out of it. I've never met anybody with such integrity, perseverance, and just he never let anything get in the way of covering sports for your children, and, you know, we worked from, you know, in the morning until midnight many, many times, so I really appreciate what he's brought to this county. I know so many children, students, were able to move forward with their lives much more beautifully because of you, because you gave them attention, they got scholarships. That doesn't always happen for people, so you will be greatly missed here, and I'm happy for your retirement, but sad for Lake County that they're losing you.
So just real quick personal experience, I think I was nine or 10 years old. When I played soccer, in my final game, I was interviewed by the local newspaper in Marin County, and I was on the front page of the sports section. And at that age, that was one of the most exhilarating moments, to see myself on the newspaper. I made it on the newspaper. You did that all the time for a whole lot of kids, and I don't know, I'm sure you do, but the impact that that motivates, that that generates energy and motivation to do more when you're a kid, to get that level of attention, every kid deserves an applause. I really believe in that philosophy, and you are an echo chamber for the applause they already heard on the field and that they feel in their schools, but you continued that at a level that they would not be able to reach if it wasn't for the newspaper. So thank you so much for generating that kind of emotion in all of our kids, because we need to keep pushing them, and you did. So thank you for that.
And if I can just add, this is my first time meeting you, sir, and I applaud everything I've heard here. I'm a recovering journalist myself, and as part of that, I've met any number of unique and colorful sports editors who do the most thankless of thankless jobs at odd hours of the weekend and the night, and their dedication to get out to the site, to collect scores from God knows where, to do Agate results. And when I first moved here, one of the first things I did notice was the strength of the sports coverage back in the day. I'm so old, I remember when we had sports sections actually separate and stuff like that, so I've appreciated your work, not even knowing it was your work. For most of the time I've been here, I applaud your work, and please enjoy your retirement. You're going to leave large shoes to fill. And just echoing what my colleague said, you know, sports is news because we do celebrate local lives, because it's interesting, and because I can write a 30-inch epic about what's happening at City Hall, and nobody will care, but they will absolutely care who won the last football game. And I know you've probably got some angry stuff with the good stuff.
And half will love you and half will hate you.
Yeah, roughly order, but thank you for all that. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
I got my scrap.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, that will close our 6.2 item. I think we're on time. Let's see, 10 o'clock? So moving right on then. So we'll take up our 7.2 item. 7.2, consideration of sending a letter to Congressman Thompson regarding possible resolution in PG&E's proposed decommissioning of Potter Valley Dam. This will be presented by Matthew Rothstein.
Good morning, Board. Matthew Rothstein, Deputy County Administrative Officer. As always, it's a privilege to be with you this morning. Your Board has consistently and steadfastly raised concerns over potential adverse effects of decommissioning and removal of Scott Dam by PG&E. Lake County's esteemed Congressman, Mike Thompson, has expressed interest in assisting Lake County in making our concerns and priorities known, and he's also encouraged county supervisors and leaders to share areas of priority for mitigation and restoration measures should decommissioning and dam removal prove inevitable. The letter attached to this agenda item, and displayed here as it appears on Board Letterhead with a couple of very minor fixes, reiterates your Board's opposition to decommissioning and describes anticipated categories of need should dam removal occur. Staff recommends that your Board approve this letter and authorize the Vice Chair to sign, as it will assist in further communications with Congressman Thompson and other interested parties. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Matthew. Any conversation, questions from the Board? Go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, very meat. Appreciate this item coming forward, and I appreciate the hard work staff has put into it. And I know this is such a complicated issue, and we've started this new public process with the Russian River Water Forum and stuff like that, but between the previous effort and the Two Basin Solution and this current effort ramping up in the Russian River watershed, if I were to offer one gentle criticism or offer a friendly amendment, it's the notion that, as has been studied only very briefly, the notion of partial removal, partial decommissioning that would permanently lower the elevation of the dam, possibly allow for some fraction of water storage to continue to occur, definitely would be beneficial for sediment removal. And so although it's been kind of limited to side notes and some engineering reports and stuff like that, the idea, the physical idea of partial removal with installation of fish passage options up and downstream is an option that has not been studied, to my knowledge, in any detail, and I think that's understandable because the Eel River interests would have zero interest in anything short of total removal, and those people farther down the Potter Valley project may not have a partial removal of Scott Dam on the front burner of their wish lists. So I'm totally okay with moving this letter as is. I just want to kind of drop an idea that as we move forward in this process, that partial removal or partial decommissioning that would allow some level of water storage to continue and would allow us to consider fish passage options that, again, have never been fully considered with the Scott Dam itself, might be something we would want to take a look at down the road.
Appreciate your comments, Michael. Supervisors about the A.
Just, so I think this is an important process, an important letter, an important step. I guess one of my, and I just saw the correction, and it didn't really strike me when reviewing it, but I see now we've replaced it with Chair Simon, Vice Chair Simon, because he's the Chair today. But I'm wondering if we can get all five signatures on there to really strengthen the document with our support, rather than just one signature, just kind of putting it out there. We've done that before in the past for certain important letters that we've submitted. Either way, move forward, but just kind of wondering if that's a possibility. Obviously, we would have to wait for our colleagues to come back in order to get their signatures, but just curious how the Board would feel about that, and if it strengthens it or if it's just a waste of time.
You know, from my point of view, obviously, having all five signatures on there is a good thing. We do have some folks out, and I know we were looking to get this letter out as soon as possible, so I don't know everybody's travel schedule. I would be leaning on our CIO for that.
It'll be next week before we can get those signatures because of, at least with the Chair, we cannot email or Adobe Sign.
Lloyd or Matthew, does that create any issues at this point? That would be my only concern at this time, would be timing.
Yeah. From my perspective, I mean, if your Board is comfortable approving the language...
So those are my thoughts.
Yeah, and I like the idea of sharing the language and then getting him the original copy with all signatures on there. So that would be a good way to go.
Any more discussion at the Board? Not seeing any. I'm going to go ahead and open this up to public input. Anyone in the room? You have three minutes, so come on up.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Michael Wegner. I think, Mr. Green, it's a very good point that this stuff gets brought forward. I think there's long-reaching effects of the potential of what we undo or do do. So taking the time to really vet it and look at how all of this is going to play out and getting kind of ahead of the curve, I think is a really smart move on your guys' side. So, you know, as a single member, but as a part of the public in general, I thank you guys for bringing this forward, and thank you, sir, for drafting everything, and appreciate you guys keeping an eye on what's going on in a big perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Any more public comment in the room? Not, we're going to go ahead.
Just a quick response to Mr. Wegner. So all possibilities definitely were reviewed in the original, what was it called? The NOI, the, I forget what the group specifically was called that was looking into it. I forget the specific group. But all solutions were looked at, whether it was doing a fish passage with what's there, doing partial decommissioning or full decommissioning. And so those options were definitely vetted to a certain degree and gone through with the, and there was probably about 30 different individuals that were part of that interest group. So it's not a, it's not an option that was ignored or breezed over, but it doesn't resolve the problem of the majority of those and who is going to hold the bill of continuing to maintain and run a partial dam still at that point in time. So it's definitely still something that we could look into, but I know it wasn't something that was breezed over or passed over.
Thank you. Any hands up in the Zoom room?
No hands in Zoom.
Okay, with that, we're going to go ahead and close public input and bring it back for action at the Board.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the letter to Congressman Thompson regarding the possible resolution in PG&E's proposed decommissioning of Potter Valley Dam with the proposal from Mr. Rothstein to submit the verbiage to our Congressman and get all five signatures with the original copy in his hand.
Second.
There's a motion in the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Rothstein, thank you very much. Is 6.3 moving forward today?
We can't take that up until 10 o'clock, but we will continue it to a time certain, date and time certain, but we could pick up 514 and 517, those pulled items. We do have Behavioral Health in the room.
Okay, excellent. We'll start with item 514. 514, I will read that out. Item 5.14, adopt the resolution authorizing cancellation of reserve accounts in the amount of $3,167,543 to provide sufficient cash flow and authorize the Board Chair to sign. This is presented today by our Behavioral Health Department. I see we have Stephen Carter, Elise Jones. So go ahead.
Morning, Board. Would you like me to bring?
Oh, you pulled it? Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for taking up this item. So the reason I brought this out is we're asking to take out about $3.1 million from our reserves to help pay for the bills that we need to pay for services that have been rendered. Obviously, in the memo, it dictates as to why it is that there's a need to pull out the reserves. It's because the state of California has a bit of a hiccup in its payment system, and we have not been reimbursed for those services. Therefore, we have contracts that are waiting to get paid, and we're not getting the funding from the state. So we have to figure out a way for liquidity in order to pay these things. So I appreciate the need for resolution today. I'm a little nervous at the total amount that we have to pull from our reserves, but there is light at the end of the tunnel with the expectations, and I believe it's in the memo or was in the emails that you sent to me, that two to three weeks is the anticipation for when hopefully there's a resolution to this at the state level. And so one of my, the reason I wanted to pull this is for not me making a demand unilaterally, but seeing if the Board has approval to do so. I'd like to get some transparency in what is owed, what uses and limitations from each of those reserves are, because there are restrictions for those reserves, and then just whatever reports you can provide to help create transparency, to better understand where the money's coming from, what the money's being used for, and then keep us in the know of getting those reimbursements from the state, rather than just saying, yes, I wanted to have, because it was very vague, it's a large pot of money, different reserves. If there's any way that I, we can get a report to provide a little bit more transparency, that would make me feel better about moving forward today. And of course, I'm looking for the Board's consensus on that or comments from Behavioral Health on that request.
Go ahead and respond, Stephen.
Interim Behavioral Health Director, Stephen Carter. There are reports that we can present. Like Supervisor Shabatia said, these expenses have already happened. So we can pull reports that would match housing funds, MHSA funds, and workforce training funds, invoices that have not been paid by the state that would match these funding sources and these restrictions. So we can provide that report. Would you want it in a Board item or would it be just an email to Board members? Because it is part of, all of these are part of our standard Behavioral Health expenses. There isn't special, there are special restrictions, but it's our standard special restrictions. So.
Go ahead, Superintendent.
If it's possible, I know that in September, we do our final budget to just kind of get an update and maybe a report at that time that seems to fit in where it's not a separate agenda item, and it gives hopefully enough time to be able to rectify the issue with the state.
Absolutely can do that, and hopefully by then, we're actually putting these reserves in more back.
And so just to add a little bit more information, one of my reasons I bring the concern is, and I could be wrong on my numbers, but I'm looking at potentially around 5.5 total million, total million, 5.5 million total in reserves for all of the reserves that Behavioral Health has for substance abuse and Behavioral Health. It breaks down a little further into specifics of categorical funds that we've received, and we're asking for 3.1 out of the 5.5 to be pulled out. So that's why I have my concerns, to make sure that I'm in the know, because I want to make sure and help protect those reserves are there for a reason, and so that's why I was bringing it up.
Very understandable, considering the large amount.
And it sounds like the September coming back and reporting on where we're at is acceptable. So go ahead, Michael. Superintendent Green?
Yeah, yeah, I just, whether it's in the form of a report or something like that, just the phrasing of the resolution cancellation of reserve accounts. So long story short, I think we all agree, we'd love to get the reserves built back up at some appropriate time. So although it does not anticipate that this will resolve prior to the close of the fiscal year, if we go ahead and pay it out of the reserve funds, we're still going to try to bill through this other process. And if they approve payments for stuff we've already paid, and I don't know how that would work, but we would continue to seek reimbursement through this new process that ain't working so good right now. And upon such reimbursement, finally, through that, the expectation, although not stated expressly in this resolution, is we would build the reserves back up.
Hundred percent plus, at least. I would say about 50% more.
Okay.
That should all come to fruition before September, otherwise the state really has some problems.
Would that require another resolution to reestablish the reserves we're canceling today?
Yes, but it's part of the final budget resolution. It's all built part of that package. So it is incorporated in the standard final budget. When the documents come out, there's a fund summary that shows per fund what the reserves are and the adjustments, and that will show that. If you look at the fund for, we're talking to this one for some reason. If you look at the fund for Behavioral Health, it'll show zero as of June 30th, and then it'll show increases of $2,600,000, and then it'll show that as of September, the reserves are reinstated.
And we have some confidence, although we haven't made it yet, that this new system will go live at some point?
Hundred percent, has to.
It's live, it's just broken.
It's live and billing is broken. So March, the reason why the state hasn't paid us since March, we're part of a pilot program that was building the new EHR, the health record system, and that's what isn't billing up to the state properly. And most counties, if not all, are moving to this system.
So we're paying it forward. That's nice of us.
We're, yes.
That's good. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Yes, go ahead. Lloyd?
Thank you, Vice Chair. It's come to our attention that apparently this may require a four-fifths vote, so just wanted to state that right at the onset before any action is taken, so that this, you know, the discussion is certainly productive, but this may need to take place.
So we're going to be moving this item then?
Yeah.
We don't have four fifths today, so.
I'd recommend moving it to next week, or continue it to next week.
Well, thank you very much, Lloyd. Thank you very much. Okay. Well, we're going to go ahead and finish public input. We'll finish out here. You know, obviously, are there any more questions from the Board?
I guess a quick question. I know we got consensus today on getting a report. Do I need to bring that back up for next time? Because this isn't consent. I'm assuming that this might show back up in consent for the following week. Do I need to ask for that same consensus, or is this consensus today enough to be able to move forward with that report?
I think the consensus, it's just a direction to staff essentially.
I figured I just wanted to make sure and check.
All right. Even if it wasn't, we'll do it.
Yeah, but it can't come back to consent as a four fifths vote. It's got to come out.
We'll place it on untimed or timed item.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and open it up. If there's no more comments from the Board, we'll go ahead and open it up from public input, starting in the room. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Please introduce yourself.
Michael Wegner. You know, what we're talking about is basically allowing the state to borrow a couple of million dollars. Is that, if I'm, no.
If I may clarify without taking up your time.
Sure.
We are waiting for reimbursements from the state, so we're going to pay our contractors, and then the state's going to reimburse us, and then we'll be back whole.
Right. And I follow you on that, through that process, but you're covering the bills, right, with a couple of million dollars? So would it be unreasonable to ask for an interest rate on that couple of million from the state? Just a question.
I like your business.
I would love to, but.
I think you could request it, I believe. I don't think that's unreasonable. On a million dollars over the course of even one quarter, that's a lot of money. And if municipal, municipality or corporation, which is what you are, to lend or cover a fee is not unreasonable to ask for a fee for that money.
Thank you for your comment, Michael.
And I do know from experience of billing for stuff, there's always some hiccups within billing, some errors within billing, some discrepancies within billing, and I've never seen the bill be paid over with interest unless they said it's finalized and it's ready to go, and then they just, for some reason, don't send a check. But obviously, here, you're getting a denial before you can finish up everything, so it's a little bit of a different scenario. Try if you can.
Never hurts to ask, but.
Waiting.
Thank you very much. So with this item, Lloyd, County Counsel, thank you for keeping us aware of the situation. We will be moving this item to next week's agenda. It'll either be a timed item or an untimed item. It'll be on the agenda, not in the consent agenda. So thank you for your time today. Let me double check. I forgot Zoom. Any comments on Zoom?
No hands on Zoom.
Thank you. My first meeting with Zoom too, so, besides being on Zoom. So, all right. With that, we'll go ahead and close this item. And are we going to need a motion, or can we just give direction to?
Directions, suspicion.
Excellent. So this will come back next week?
Yes, sir. Vice Chair?
What happened? Yes?
Sir, Lars Ewing is on Zoom. If you want to take up 5.17 before the 10 o'clock item.
Should be able to get through it pretty quickly.
Do my best.
All right. So we'll close that item. We'll move to item 5.17, approve the plans and specifications for East Lake Sanitary Landfill Expansion Project and authorize the Public Services Director to advertise for bids. So we're going to go ahead and turn this over to Superintendent Shabatia. You pulled it?
Again, thank you for introducing the item, and thank you, Mr. Ewing, Director Ewing, for being here with us. So without wasting too many people's time, I will push to move this forward. I'm not looking to deny this project. There's been way too much work, way too much effort to stop this. However, I do feel the need to express certain things. There is a landfill that is adjacent to city limits and adjacent to wilderness area, the Cache Creek Wilderness, which is also a part of the National Monument. The placement of this landfill, in my heart of hearts, tells me that it is not the best place for a landfill to continue to expand. This is phase one of three phases. As the phases continue, it will continue to march down south and a little bit to the west, which gets closer and closer to where residential areas are located in the city of Clear Lake. There, the landfill is located in the headwaters of Molesworth Creek. A lot of mitigation processes have been done and are continuing to be done to mitigate any potential, what's the word I'm looking for? VOCs, I know that that's the acronym, that gets put into the water. It's basically mitigations to ensure that nothing mixes into the water from the landfill. And I appreciate that those are being accentuated in this new phase versus where we have been before. However, I'm still very concerned that everything downhill, other than a berm, everything downhill is the city from the landfill. And so I believe it's at around 1,700 feet elevation, when I was looking at all the topographic maps, and the city ends up at about 1,300 elevation at the bottom. Molesworth Creek goes all the way through the avenues underneath the highway and ends up right next to Lamp lighter Inn over on Lake Shore Drive. So I know that this is phase one. Again, we don't have any timelines available to us to say, let's find another place, that's a whole new project, that's a whole big headache. So phase one can move forward, but I know there's phase two and phase three, and I just need to express that this, we need to have a different plan for the health of the environment, the health of the residents in the area, the capability of economic development surrounding that area, and putting things in a whole, in a landfill, in my opinion, is just not the 21st century solution to waste. And we have to figure out, and California needs to figure out, because they have their limitations unfortunately, on how it is that we can do better. The city is growing, and I just see this as a potential impediment to its growth and a potential health issues. We have gotten direction from the Department of Water Resources in the past, I think maybe the last one was 2015, to do specific mitigations that were not in place. The city has made requests for mitigations. to do specific mitigations that were not in place. The city has made requests for mitigations. I think the last one might have been around 2015 as well, or 2019. And again, appreciate all the work that's been done, but I'm very concerned that as we keep expanding it, that we're not creating the environment that that area deserves. So I just wanted to make those statements, and I'll leave it to that. Happy to move this forward, but also want to work with Director Ewing and Public Services to figure out what is a different solution, because I don't know what that solution is, but I know that this is not appropriate to continue down this path. As it's not, it's not conducive to a healthy environment for that area. The closest living residence is about 1,500 feet downhill from the landfill. And there's more vacant lots that are available, but again, who's going to want to develop those lots when you're getting closer and closer to a landfill? So again, I just needed to express that rather than just let it go through. This is a project that has taken a lot of people hours, staff time and energy. Phase one is good to go as soon as we go through this motion of approving, but I needed to express for phase two and phase three, and love to continue having discussions to figure out what the other solutions could be.
Thank you very much, Supervisor. I don't know if you have any comments, Lars?
No, I'd be happy to, and I appreciate the discussion because it is important. Landfill siting is obviously never, there's never one preferred location, or there's always going to be some opposition to it. The siding of that landfill goes back, you know, 50, 60, 70 years. You know, the latest documentation of it as an official landfill is 1972, but there were, there was a lot of operations going on at that site prior to that. In 1989, the state passed AB 939 that required a county-wide integrated waste management plan, and that included a citing element where the county, on behalf of all the jurisdictions, and in cooperation with the jurisdictions, needed to identify, have a citing element that plans out the location of all solid waste-related facilities, landfills, transfer stations, recycling centers and such. So that was, that was in 1989, early 90s. That citing element was passed that identified the Eastlake landfill as the disposal location for, on behalf of the entire county. And since that time, a lot of, obviously, a lot of work has been done. We're talking about phase one, and then ultimately phase two and three, which really you could almost say that these are phases 11 and 12 and 13 or so. This is, this is the current expansion, a lateral expansion of that location that has been in operation for, as I said, nearly, you know, probably over half a century. The SEQA document, the initial study and then mitigated negative declaration for this, for this project that the Planning Commission approved, your Board of Supervisors was involved with that a couple of years ago. The scope of that environmental document is not just this one phase, but it is the subsequent phases that allows us to have a location for disposal. So this action, while it is the approval of the plans and specifications for phase one, the subsequent phase two and phase three would come to your board in similar fashion. So if there would be a request for, you know, for pushing pause, at least maybe not on phase one, but a reconsideration of phase two and three, now's the time, and I'll take that as input to bring it to the Solid Waste Task Force, which we have a meeting coming up, I believe, next week or the week thereafter. So we'll have that as a discussion point. But it's not something that, a new location, certainly, that has all sorts of challenges. Another alternative is hauling out of county, and as you can imagine, the cost for that, would I imagine, you know, double, at least the disposal rates on the backs of the citizens of the county. So those are my initial, initial thoughts. I mean, we you know, I haven't really prepared a presentation. These are just items in response to this being pulled. But the fact that we are moving ahead is certainly appreciated. We are running very short of space there, so this phase one will give us some, some space, but phase two is right on the, right on the back of this, so we'll need to we'll need to shift into high gear if it's the board's direction for us to look at an alternative location or an alternative disposal method.
Thank you, Lars. Supervisor Spatia?
And my thoughts on this have evolved, and I know that Director Ewing knows that. I've spoken to him multiple times about the landfill over the years. I'm still learning, was going through all of the attachments to this item yesterday. Appreciate you sending those out to me, whether that was the actual construction plans or even finding the SEQA document on the California website. I don't want to stop anything right now because there's no solution to be offered to stop anything, but definitely would love to follow up with discussions if possible, and I think those discussions, to be honest, need to start at the state level because how simple is it today to get an incinerator? It's just not that simple, but yet that could be a potential solution, but the state of California does not make that an easy solution. Is it cost effective? I don't know. But again, I don't want to, I don't want to burden anything by just saying that's how I feel until I have a little bit more facts and information on what's possible. I'm open to it going to the Solid Waste Task Force, but again, I don't want to say that's because we want to stop phase two and three. More of a what else is available? And the avenues, that area of the city is one of the poorest areas of the city of Clear Lake. And I think that we need to look at the equity of the impacts to communities from a landfill. We need a landfill, but we also need to recognize the impacts that it has to the environment, not just the soils or the water, but also to how a community grows around there. So again, none of my words here are to describe any wrongdoing or any cutting of corners whatsoever from our Public Services crew. I think they do a fabulous job. I've mentioned it multiple times to Director Ewing, that I go to the landfill all the time, and it's a very clean environment. As far as I'm concerned, they do a really good job of keeping everything down and keeping the garbage where it needs to be. This is more of just a concern that I want to make sure to follow up on.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Supervisor Green.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much for stating your concerns. Very helpful for, again, the new kid on the block. And thank you also, Director Ewing. I have briefly toured the landfill, and among the things that did strike me at the time were, it is a very nice, clean landfill, but it is, like many land use decisions from 50 years ago, perhaps not cited in the best of places. And we've seen landfills not cited in great places up and down the Central Valley, so this this speaks to me. The concerns that you're stating speak to me. It is too close for comfort in many, many things. But I think you're right. We have to kind of go down the path that's been laid out before us, at least as far as phase one, and without really knowing more, and I'd love to see the IS and the mitigated neg that came out of it for my own education down the road. But whatever happens with phases two and three, I don't think it's too soon to start signaling to Solid Waste Task Force or anybody else that if we haven't spent a lot of time in recent years looking for a new site, we should probably double down on that. I think there could be any number of sites, and you're right, Director Ewing, none of that would be easy, but I can think of any number of areas of the county where there might be opposition to a landfill, but the type of potential environmental impacts and community impacts that you're describing would be mitigated greatly just by the choice of a new location. So yeah, I'll be supporting this moving forward, but I do appreciate the comments, and I'm interested in further discussions, probably focus not necessarily on slow-rolling phases two and three, but really accelerating a search for an alternative site so that we would have something to talk about if we wanted to slow down phase three.
Thank you, Supervisor Green. You know, thank you for the concerns. Also, I'd just like to follow up. I think that's great that we're having the conversation. I really like the idea of looking at alternatives. You talked about incinerator, other technologies out there that are, you know, other communities are probably looking at or areas. I think that's a great idea, and, you know, making it known is really good. But yeah, I can think of a couple areas too that may be available now, just thinking of, you know, in different areas, so. But obviously, going to support this today as we move forward. I know that this was also something that was really cooked into high gear once we had the valley fire in 2015. I know that put some real challenges on us, all the debris that was brought in here locally, and then continued with the fires as it was going. I know that we also lent it a hand to Mendocino, where they had brought some of their fire debris over to our our dumps here in Lake County, just to be, obviously, neighborly. Obviously, they had gone through some of the horrible tragedies and the fires like we had done, so I know that also compounded moving this stuff a little bit quicker too, so we can continue on with our operation. So I appreciate it. Appreciate the Solid Waste Task Force. Are you seated on the Solid Waste Task Force? I think we can continue those conversations. That's great for the Board Supervisor that really, you know, was taking this one to heart, so I think that's a good conversation and a place to start. ESJPA too, that Lars, you're the representative, obviously, you said that's a state-level conversation. We can continue there. And so with that, if there are no more comments, I'm going to open this up to public input here in the room. Anyone have public input? All right. Any hands up on Zoom?
No hands on Zoom.
All right. With that, we'll close that item and bring it back to the board for action.
Thank you for the discussion, everyone, and I move to approve the plans and specifications for the Eastlake Sanitary Landfill Expansion Project and authorize the Public Services Director to advertise for bids.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you. Close that item. Thank you, Public Service Director Lars Ewing.
All right, thank you.
Excellent. Clarification, CAO, 5.19 and 5.20, are we taking those up today or they've been pulled?
We are going to take them up today. What I recommend is start with our 10 o'clock and then do the 5.22, since Director Harder is in the room, because we will have to continue both of those to a time and dates, one of them time and date certain, another one untimed or timed. And while he's here, we can do that.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and move to our 6.3 item, our 10 a.m. item. Public hearing sitting concurrently is Clear Lake Keys CSA, number one, number two, number six, number 13, number 20, number 21. Board of Supervisors, Kelseyville County Water Works District, number three, and the Lake County Sanitation District, Board of Directors. Consideration of A, a resolution confirming collections of annual lighting fees, B, a resolution confirming collections of delinquent water fees, C, a resolution confirming collections of delinquent water and sewer fees, and D, a resolution of delinquent sewer fees for the Lake County Sanitation District. Think I got it all? Go ahead. Scott Harder, Special Districts, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. What you have before you today is a noticed public hearing for the consideration of resolutions authorizing the board to take action to roll delinquent water bills, delinquent sewer bills, and the annual placement of lighting district fees onto the tax roll. Unfortunately, these resolutions require a four-fifths majority vote, so the board will not be able to take action today. And as CAO Parker indicated, we'll want to continue that to a date and time certain. But this is a properly noticed public hearing, so I believe we could probably open the public hearing, and I'll defer to County Council on that, but there may be members of the public that were wanting to speak today to this item, and then we can go from there.
Your board may take in, as part of public, members of the public and their comments and along in addition to taking in any other comments at the continued date of the hearing.
Okay. Next week, is that the 18th or?
We recommend the 25th at 11:15.
Okay. All right. So as far as public comment goes, then we'll go ahead and open it up and have the hearing today?
That's the, the other option is to just continue with, therefore thereby giving notice to the public of the continued date of the hearing, so that all comment will be taken at that later date.
Okay. Do we have anyone here in the chambers on this item? Want to make sure, pay attention to everybody's time here. Yourself? Then we'll go ahead and open the public hearing for comment?
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Matthew St. Clair. I don't have a lot of information, mostly questions about this. I own property. I'm being billed by Special Districts. I'm receiving those services. There is no means for the public to reach out to Special Districts to get information about what services are being offered or provided. I don't know that this is the venue to engage with this, but I've reached out to Special District Office at least three times in the last year and have gotten no response. Please and thank you.
Thank you.
And if I may add.
Oh, I forgot your name.
Matthew St. Clair.
Oh, I got it. Okay.
I just wanted to add that their office is also a block away, and so if you wanted to just walk to the office, since you're here, if you have the chance and you have the time, that that would be another way to go get some answers.
I have been into the office multiple times, spoken with the guys. The folks in the office are wonderful. They seem accommodating, but can't get anything done.
Okay.
Please and thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on Zoom at this point?
I see no hands.
Okay. Supervisor Green?
Just a real quick question in the attachments, and I don't know what the content of the public notice was, but typically would have the list of delinquent accounts, so I didn't see that attached to today's item. So two questions. One, was the list of delinquent accounts part of the public notice process? And whether it was or not, could that be posted when this item comes back so that we can actually give constructive notice through our agenda what those delinquent accounts might be as a bonus notice on top of whatever your billing practice is and whatever public notice has been put in the newspaper?
We do have the list, but the list is always in flux, and the reason is because once the notice goes out, the potential accounts that are delinquent at the time, given the timeline, are noticed appropriately. If they bring their account current prior to, it's usually about the middle of August when things roll to tax roll, and we work with the auditor and the tax collector on this. If they bring their bill current, it doesn't get ruled. So all the way up until about five days before it goes to tax roll in mid-August, we're working with any customers who want to bring their account current, and they're not, they don't go onto the list. So the list is always in flux. The resolutions authorize the action based on the delinquency status of the account, but that list is essentially always changing.
Same would be true of property tax rolls too, but we still publish past due property tax notices in our legal notices. Probably required. I don't know if it's required.
I don't believe this is required of it, and property tax is an annual. This is a lot quicker moving, so that list moves and it's a lot more fluid.
And again, in the interest of whatever your internal process is, great, but when we're coming to a public hearing to allow people the opportunity to protest their delinquent account, whether it's a living list or not, we need, we need to know what delinquent account you're coming to ask to take the next steps with. So it's more a question, and we can take it up next week, but I think somehow being able to provide whatever the status is of your fluid list, snapshot in time, will be the best you can do. I get that. Just like assessment appeal hearings, we have any number of people may be appealing assessments, and a lot of those hearings may fall off as we get closer to the hearing date. So I acknowledge the difficulty, the situation, and yet I'm still kind of looking for a way to be more transparent to those people that are delinquent, that we're having a public hearing here to talk about you and a bunch of other people who are listed here in the snapshot in time. So I don't know if it's possible, and I don't know if we're going above and beyond the actual noticing requirements. But that's what stood out to me today, is I didn't have a list of delinquent accounts for all these resolutions we're getting ready to pass.
Okay. Yeah, and I hear those concerns, and if there's a way we can do that, like you said, it's going to be a snapshot in time. I'm happy to work with County Council, tax collector, and the auditor and see what we can do and make that happen.
Thanks, guys. Go ahead, Supervisor Spatia.
Just to, I guess, confess a little bit as well. I was part of this group. I seem to have missed a payment from March. Everything's all paid up, but there's a letter that everybody received based on where your bills are already going that stated that today was your assessment date for this specific public hearing and so on and so forth. So I think the notification was very personal to each individual. On taxes for properties, that follows the State Controller's Office. That's not where you get your state guidelines on what to follow. So that's completely different, not in the sense of completely in, but it's not So that's completely different, not in the sense of completely in, but it's not controlled by the same department of the state of California. And I'm not quite certain how the individual, I'm concerned about reviewing through an individual basis. Are we going to start to dissect and say this person should not be on a lien, this person should be on a lien? On an assessment hearing, we're talking about an issue with the property itself, which is typically what the assessment hearings are. So having the property and noticing the specific property is one thing. That way, maybe the neighbors want to come and say, absolutely, this is something that's been a problem. But this is a very personal thing as far as the access to water or access to lighting or access to sewer. The notification was done to the individuals. And I don't know where it becomes almost a feeling of discriminatory when a couple of homes are pulled out saying, we don't want to do a assessment or lien on this property, but the rest we do. I'm not quite sure what the criteria would be to see a list and dissect the list. But what I would suggest is instead of waiting until next Tuesday is during the week, work with special districts to see what that list might look like if you're interested in that information rather than waiting for the meeting.
I appreciate there's apples and oranges in terms of the fees being imposed, but the end result is we're talking about placing liens, right? We're talking about uncollected debts. And I, you know, I'm glad you got a letter. I don't know if it was a certified letter. I don't know if there's any action taken when those letters come back. It's undeliverable. Letters may come back undeliverable because people die, move away, and what have you. So the one and done letter through the billing process or whatever, that's cool. Was there a legal notice published in the newspaper? Maybe. Okay. So the contents probably meet the minimum requirements there. But again, before we talk about putting liens on people's property, in addition to what the minimum noticing requirement is, I think sometimes it's just a good idea, signal one last time. For example, if you got a letter that it was a public hearing today, nobody's here today, so they're not going to know that we're continuing it.
That's why we're doing two weeks to re-notify and make sure everybody's aware.
And redo a newspaper ad as well?
That I look to staff.
You can't get that done in two weeks. I'm sorry.
Ball's already been in motion.
All right.
Okay. In anticipation, then obviously moving this forward, you know, I would just comment, I think we've seen the full list in the past. If sitting here at the board for myself, obviously, you know, it was one thing missing. So understanding it's a moving target, if there's ability, you know, to get the board list, not looking to look at it individually, just, you know, a list I've seen, you know, we all are on sewer or water or some aspect here in Lake County, at least a majority of us, you know, and, you know, Supervisor, good job. That letter prompted you to pay the bill, correct?
It's embarrassing.
That's exactly what we're looking to do. It happens. You think something's on automatic payment or something, something changes, you know, a card, your Visa card or whatever expires and you forget to call in. So things like that happen, understandable throughout the process. So moving forward, I think if there's anything, obviously, we've met the requirements, the noticing requirements, and, you know, in the six years that I've sat here on the board, haven't had a lot of participation during these events. We've have a few. Obviously, we do have a gentleman here today that hopefully can get some answers to his questions and we'll go from there. So with that, there is no action to be taken today. What we do, what it sounds like is we need a motion, bring this back on 6:25 at 11:15 a.m.
7:25.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. 7:25. I apologize. A month off. 7:25. So we'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to continue this public hearing to July 25 at 11:15 a.m. Time certain.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Scott?
Thank you. And I'll work to get a list together of where we're at, current snapshot.
Okay. Excellent.
Vice Chair?
Oh, yeah.
Can we take up 5.22, please?
So we're going to move to item 5.22, sitting as the Lake County Sanitation District Board of Directors, adopt resolution revising fiscal year 2022 to 2023 adopted budget of the County of Lake by canceling reserves and fund 255 Northwest Regional Sewer System O and M reserve designation in the amount of 150,000 to make appropriations in the budget unit 8355, object code 78530-00, utilities to pay for sewer utility costs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, this item requires a four fifths vote, so the, pardon me, no action can be taken on it today. Excuse me. But the item was for consideration of canceling reserves to cover increased, unanticipated increased costs, PG&E costs related to the Northwest Sewer Collection System. So typically, when we budget, we look back at the last three to five years and budget our anticipated expenses on those prior year's expenses. The prior three to five years were pretty dry. This last winter was exceptionally wet. So with that wetness, with that increased inflow and infiltration that we saw within our Northwest system, we have higher flows. We have 22 or 23 sewer lift stations in that district in addition to the wastewater treatment plant. So all those increased flows resulted in increased pump runtimes and higher PG&E costs. So this was a request to cancel reserve to cover those higher PG&E costs.
Okay. Any comment from the board? All right. We're going to be moving this item anyway, but since we've opened it, I need to do public input. So any public input in the room? Any public input or hands up in Zoom?
No hands in Zoom.
Okay. Looking for, do we need a motion to move this forward with the date certain?
It's not necessary.
It's not necessary, but I would prefer it.
And that's for next week?
Yes, the 18th as an untimed item.
Then I move to continue this item to next week as an untimed item, and next week would be July 18, 2023.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right.
Thank you very much.
Next week. Thank you, Scott.
Vice Chair?
Yes.
Would you care to take a break? I do not have social services on Zoom at this point in time.
Yeah. Five minute break. Closer to a 10 minute break, it looks like.
10:30 is our next item.
10:30. So we're going to take a break. We'll come back at our 10:30 item. Go ahead.
I'll get more coffee.
And open the meeting back up. Sam, we're ready to go. Ready, Johanna? Excellent. So welcome back. We just took a 10 minute break, so we're going to start with our 6.4 item. Sitting as the Board of Directors for Lake County Watershed Protection District, considering of a new well located, I apologize. Yeah. Consideration of a new agricultural well located in the Big Valley Groundwater Basin at 2999 Soda Bay Road, APN 008-010-24. And this item will be presented by Scott DeLeon, our Water Resources, well, Public Works Director. Go ahead, Scott.
Good morning, Board. Thank you very much for this opportunity. Today's item is relatively new. This is brought to you as a result of a governor's executive order, and I included them in my memo. There were actually two orders by Governor Newsom. One was in March of 2022, and it was as a result of the state's declaration of a drought and emergency drought conditions. In February 13, 2023, that executive order was modified as a result of the heavy rains that we had received. However, one of the items in the original executive order was slightly modified, but it remained intact, and that is any new well that is proposed in a groundwater basin that has been declared a medium or high priority basin that is also the subject of a groundwater sustainability agency, which the Big Valley Basin is, must have approval by the GSA, the Groundwater Sustainability Agency, prior to any issuances of permits for that new well. In this particular case, this well is located within the Big Valley Basin. It exceeds the minimum use thresholds that are applied to the executive order of two acre feet per year. And so today, your board, sitting as the Board of Directors of the Watershed Protection District, which is also the Board of Directors for the Big Valley Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency, excuse me, you are tasked with hearing this proposal and deciding on whether you want to approve the permit. Okay? I see that Mr. Scully is here. He's the applicant for this well. So any specific questions that you might have, I'm sure that he will be prepared to discuss. I noted that the well could produce two acre feet or more, and that's notable because wells that produce less than that are exempt from the executive order. Mr. Scully has said if needed, this well could produce more than that. So he's asking for your consideration. A hydrology report was prepared, and it was also attached to your memo, and it concluded that the well won't have a significant impact on the basin. And staff also feels that the proposed well, yeah, and there's two tests here that you have to, that you have to do. You have to conclude that the well is not inconsistent with the objectives of the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan and that it will not result in chronic lowering or subsidence in the basin. Those are the two findings. I've summarized the goal of the sustainability plan, and if you don't mind, I'll just refer to that as the plan. And that is shown on page two of the memo. Basically, the criteria that the plan is trying to achieve or to make sure that we don't have these undesirable results include the chronic lowering of groundwater levels, the significant and reasonable reduction of groundwater storage, significant and unreasonable seawater intrusion, significant and unreasonable degraded water quality, significant or unreasonable land subsidence or depletions of interconnected surface water that have significant and unreasonable adverse impacts on beneficial uses of the surface water. Due to the location of this well, and it's a distance from other wells and the nearby Magaw Slough, I believe that is the drainage course that is adjacent to-
Yes, that is.
-to the proposed well. Due to the setback from that, it's approximately 170 feet from the Magaw Slough, and it's approximately 550 feet from the nearest well. Staff feels that suitable justification's been provided, that the proposed well is consistent with the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan, and it will not decrease the likelihood of achieving the plan's goals. So with that, we are recommending approval of the application, and I will be happy to answer any questions. I also believe that Marina Delajanas, our Deputy Director of Water Resources, may be on Zoom. She was instrumental in the development of the plan, and so she's prepared to answer any technical questions you might have regarding the Big Valley Sustainability Plan. And of course, the applicant is here to answer any questions about the specific use of the well, which, by the way, I was remiss to summarize, this is a developed site. The two properties that this well will serve are developed with existing pear orchards. There is an existing well on the property that serves both orchards, and it's the applicant's intention to have a secondary well to provide a backup to the other well. There's no increase in use of the property. So we are anticipating there's no net increase in water use. This is a backup well to be used in case something happens with the original existing well. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. And again, Mr. Scully is here to answer any technical questions about his plans for the well.
Thank you for that introduction. Do we have anything else from Water Resources? Would you like to make any comments at this point?
Nope.
Okay. Just here for questions. Excellent. So I'm going to go ahead and bring it back to the board for any questions or comments. Go ahead, Michael. All right. Supervisor Green?
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation. Appreciate the applicants being here. This is interesting. This is our first go-through. And so just in that, I want to take a little bit of time and unpack this just because we have a light agenda and because this is important stuff. So I appreciate the description as far as where we're at with the groundwater sustainability plan and the requirement now within that plan to review well permit applications. I forget what you mentioned because it's not really the two findings that are stated here. One would be impact on nearby wells, and the other would be land subsidence. So but there's a factor possibly worth considering in there that's not in those two findings, and that would be really trying to drill down, understanding any potential interaction between nearby surface water bodies. So if I can just observe something without saying it's relevant necessarily to the proceeding, it's that the hydro report doesn't really address that in any depth. And just to the extent that it does discuss subsidence, I do agree that in the basin generally, that's probably not going to be a major concern. I just found the report's findings on potential subsidence to be kind of cursory and brief and kind of self-declarative. So I didn't, I don't want to pick on it just because I think I have an understanding. The subsidence is not the biggest thing going on in Big Valley right now. That said, if we're going to be considering hydro reports moving forward, I guess I would like a little more teeth in that so I can make that finding in good faith. And I also thank you for bringing forward the executive orders that apply to the groundwater aspect of this. There's another executive order that also kind of says we have responsibility to take a look at Clear Lake Hitch recovery, including stream flows and stuff like that, that could potentially be discussed at a hearing like today. And I didn't print that out, but I just want to say that I think this is kind of routine in one sense because it is in the four corners of the groundwater sustainability plan. But because of the location of the well and because we have this other Clear Lake Hitch stuff going on, I think there's some overlays to this that we can potentially ask about. So the one concern I have about this basically is proximity to a stream channel. So I can leave it at that right now, and the applicant is here, and I see other people here may wish to comment on that as well. But appreciate the presentation so far and look forward to the discussion.
Okay. Supervisor, go.
I think the majority of my questions are for the applicant, so I'd love to hear from the applicant, maybe a brief summary. I know that there is a unused well. I don't know what that situation is with the well. And I'm looking at 50 years from now, what does this mean for that piece of land, whether you're there or not? The more wells we put in, that's more straws going into the aquifer beneath that allows people to pull more water. I'm very jealous of your other well that's below that. What an amazing well that you have that's currently feeding both. I understand the reason for a backup and also proximity to the other orchard that you have on that piece of land that we're specifically talking about today. The reason I ask about the unused is I know- The reason I ask about the unused is I know that the closest residence is further than the 340 feet. I think it's 340 for the cone of influence. But just kind of curious what's going on with the other well? If it still functions, if you have any plans to continue using it? As that has a little bit more distance from the closest residence or the closest well that's domestic use. Those are my only questions. I'll be honest, I'm definitely not the hydrologist to review these things. So putting trust into staff and their knowledge is going to be where I'm going to lean on. But those are my questions that I came up with as far as looking through all the material. Understand your reasons for doing this. Just curious about that unused versus the new place.
If you could come on up, please. Please state your name.
Yep, Pat Scully. So the unused well, we bought this orchard probably about 15 years ago and it had two wells on it. The unused well was not real functional when we got it. We've never really used it that much. We have used it and it's just the production's just gone down. I believe it's an issue with probably old well casing and rusted over with iron bacteria to where the perforations don't let the water in anymore. You know, this is a, this is an agricultural basin and you can't have agriculture without the ability to. Wells don't last forever. And we don't have to do wells very often, but we do. You know, we have on occasion had to drill new wells. I think that's something that you guys need to address amongst yourselves. Obviously, I've been talking to Scott for a long time about this and how to go forward. We had this permit, this application, in about the time that Governor Newsom put his drought restrictions in. And so that's been almost a year and a half. And to my knowledge, this is the first permit that people have asked for. There's been plenty of wells drilled, but we're the first one that have come to you and asked for a permit. As far as the hydrology report goes, I think the intent of the hydrology report was just to show that it's not going to affect nearby wells. I don't think the hydrology report addresses the GSP. As far as the GSP goes, what you guys need to decide is whether or not this well is going to impact our ability to meet our goals. And we just went through the two worst drought years in the last 40 years and exceeded those goals with flying colors. I mean, the intent of that plan is to make sure that the groundwater basin recovers and doesn't have chronic lowering like we've seen in the Santa Lacan Valley. Scott mentioned. So this is about 80 acres, this orchard's about 80 acres. And right now, we're feeding it out of one well. We haven't had any issues, but if we have an issue, we've got about $6,000 an acre in the production costs getting that crop grown. So, you know, we're looking at, if there's an issue, it's a big issue for us. And no water and if we had a well failure or something happened to our other well, we'd be in real trouble and that's why we're, that's why we're considering. The other well, I guess, we don't know the history of it and we don't even know how deep it is. All we know is it doesn't pump water very good. And so we're just trying to be proactive on making sure we don't get ourselves into trouble.
You said there was two wells on there? Are you talking about the one that's in use for both properties and the one that's not really usable? Or are there two wells on that property we're speaking of today?
On the parcel that we're talking about, there's one well.
Okay.
And it's, but that parcel is fed by the other, the other well on the other parcel now.
And sorry, for curiosity's sake, I take it that this is a built-in redundancy so that if your primary well fails, it would feed both of those properties through this new well that would, if approved.
Correct. They're all valid, both properties are valid together.
I think from a business perspective, I completely understand why you're here. And with all the information provided by Water Resources and the information, then I'm okay with moving forward. I know that we've seen good results as far as our data coming from Sigma. And let's keep it healthy. And this doesn't look like it will move it into an unhealthy situation.
Okay, Supervisor Green.
If I could ask a couple of questions. So I appreciate you very much being first permit application. I'm kind of aware there is some drilling going on and we should have more permits in. But the requirement in place currently for the hydro report, I am sure can be considered daunting. Still want to also highlight that as part of the hitch emergency, among the many initial letters we got was one from CDFW, California Department of Fish and Wildlife urging the county to pass a well drilling moratorium. So there's certainly a breadth of concern. Again, we got a wet spring, but as you mentioned, drought has been a concern in past years. And as El Nino sets in, certainly going to be a concern here. Also want to highlight that I do accept totally the need for a backup well and the justification for that. This varies a little bit from our friends in cannabis seeking a discretionary use permit in which that we could, in our reports, talk about water use, but also impose conditions of approval that would say, in fact, that if a cannabis project brought forth a replacement well, it could be limited to retiring one well and using that water supply for another. So I appreciate the statement in the report and here today, what the intended use is. But there's nothing in the granting of this permit that gives the county or anyone else, the Groundwater Sustainability Plan Agency, any ability to regulate how water is used out of that new well. It could be a backup well, it could be doubling down if you rehab the other well and decide to go in a different direction with different crops. So I just want to highlight that for the record. It's a plausible usage, but the main thing is we're approving the well permit, not any usage of water that would come out of that well once it's approved. So again, we're kind of, on the one hand, getting told by the agencies, we don't know where all our wells are, this basin. We need to kind of get a handle on groundwater generally. And we need to get a handle on how we understand stream flows and wells and stuff like that. We're not there right now, that would today. So if I can just confirm the setback from the nearest water body and the proposed depth of the well and any statement you can make or wish to make today about your understanding of any potential interconnectivity with the closest waterway.
Well, if, you know, I think the, well, this is, this is a lot deeper topic than I'm prepared to talk about and knowledgeable to talk about. But I can tell you, that soil out there is very heavy adobe soil. And there are layers, large layers of adobe clay. And even if you want to look in Magaw Slough, when it stops running, stagnant water stays in there forever. I mean, it's, it's not, it's not a gravelly creek bottom there. And it's really not a place that the hitch want to be spawning either. You do see hitch go up there in a year like this year. There were a few hitches that went up there in a real super wet year. But typically, that is a fairly stagnant water, body of water that flows when you get a heavy rain and then it stops flowing. But it's characterized that. I mean, I would anticipate your question as far as how deep the well goes. I mean, we need to go deep enough to get water. Typically, those wells in that area are a couple hundred feet deep. And they go through several layers of different clay layers as you're getting down there. I don't know if that answers your question or not, but that's probably about as far as I could go on my knowledge of the hydrology out there.
If, just hypothetically, if we were to, not for this permit, but in some other context, some other way, ask for a hydrologist to analyze as a third criteria, how to demonstrate any linkage or lack of linkage between nearby surface water bodies, that probably would add to the cost of the report just because of the analysis of the additional issues.
Yeah, typically, this report was, you know, you're talking about thousands of dollars to get a report. And, you know, initially, you know, Scott asked me, well, this report didn't address the, or can you go back to him and ask him to address the GSP? And, you know, that's not what the, that's not what the requirement for the report was. You know, basically, the requirement for the report was to show that you're not going to affect the nearby wells.
The criteria in the emergency declaration versus the GSP itself?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah?
And I, you know, Michael, I think it'd be interesting, and I don't know if Marina would be prepared to talk on this, but there's a little bit of a gray line between the GSP and what the intent of the GSP is and what the interaction with the Endangered Species Act is. And I think it's been reported in our, in one of our GSP meetings that it's, that was not the intent at all of the, of the GSP. So you're kind of pulling in a, I know it's a big topic.
Yeah, it's an overlay. It's an overlay. There's a GSP and then an overlay because there might be a hitch-bearing stream body there. And overlays are hard. So I get the complexity and I definitely don't want to overly complicate this, which is already a pretty complicated process. Other than the fact that I think these questions can and will come up as we start encouraging more people to get these hydro reports done for the wells that we know are being drilled. So anyway, we can take another run of that through any number of different ways, through the GSP, through ag advisory, through the Farm Bureau. So I appreciate all this stuff.
And you, you know, you as a board are going to have to determine how you're going to look at this. And, you know, to me, it seems like the logical thing would be to say if you've got an ongoing irrigated agricultural operation that's in the basin and it's, that you basically give the latitude to the Water Resources Department to issue those permits. We're not talking about changing anything that's, that's been happening all along. And, you know, I think we did see pretty good results in the plan and the recovery. And we do have a plan. We'll probably have a plan forever, I guess. I wish it wasn't the case, but I think we, it's there and it's probably going to stay there. But I also know that our, that the consultants that worked on that plan and put the plan together were amazed at the health of our groundwater basin here. You know, and weren't shy about pointing that out.
Appreciate it.
Okay, I see Marina. You have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, hi, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Scully, for being available. And thank you, Director DeLeon, for providing the background of the material that is going before the board today. Just a few high-level points that I want to talk about based off of some of the discussion that has been going on. So I do, just as a reminder, the goal of the GSP, I know that Mr. Scully brought to the attention. And the gray line between the endangered species and then also the GSP, there was a lot of discussions during our GSP development of that gray line. It is very tricky and not only does our basin have some of those issues and gray line discussions, but other basins around the state as well when it comes to listed species. So just as a refresher, the goal of the Big Valley GSP is sustainable management of the groundwater resources of our Big Valley Basin for the long-term community, environmental and economical benefits of existing and future residents and businesses in the basin. And that can be found in Section 4.3.1, also PDF of page 275 of our Big Valley GSP. And just a very brief summary, we did explore the groundwater-dependent ecosystems, GDEs oftentimes referred to, in our Big Valley GSP. So we did explore the interconnectivity of surface water and groundwater in our GSP, understanding that we have a listed species. So even though the goal of the GSP is not to necessarily protect listed species habitat, we, at our local level, understanding that we have the Clear Lake Hitch, took the initiative to really explore that, had our consultants look at that when they did the monitoring, including historical conditions, current conditions and anticipated climate conditions, and even the expansion of agriculture and businesses and just the expansion of our Big Valley Basin. Based off of that modeling, including historical period, existing conditions and future conditions, depletion of interconnected surface water was not outlined as an undesirable result. And that can be found in Table 4-2 of our Big Valley GSP, also on page 276 PDF of the GSP, which can be found on our Water Resources website. Also, as a reminder, even though our GSP is approved by our GSA, sitting as the Board of Directors, and then also the California Department of Water Resources, it is outlined that we still need to do more monitoring of the connectivity between surface water and groundwater. So therefore, we have been installing wells. We're planning to install more wells on the creeks to do that routine monitoring. And our GSP gives us the authority to continue to do that monitoring. And we do check that data on a monthly basis. And then even though our GSP is approved, we have annual reports that we need to submit to the state. So as we're going through and doing this monitoring, getting, strengthening our understanding of the connectivity of surface water and groundwater, even though right now it is not outlined as an undesirable result, we have the ability to look at that data and revise and provide any modification, require any monitoring on some of these wells as we go down the line. And I say we, I refer to our Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency. So that was just a plethora of information. If you need me to dissect anything else, I'm more than happy to. But again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to this.
Thank you, Marina.
Just a real quick follow-up, Marina. This is the first permit. I would have expected, based on anecdotal evidence of the amount of drilling activity, that he would be the first, but there'd be several in line behind that. Do you have any anecdotal information that wells are being drilled that require this process, that the process has not been initiated because of lack of a well permit application?
No. So again, Mr. Scully is the first one to actually submit this application. I have had folks in the basin reach out and just inquire, what would the next steps be now that we have an approved GSP? I have not had anything stronger than that of, you know, I'm just inquiring for future plans of well drilling. You know, our staff is actively out there. It's a, it's a pretty flat basin. So if you see these well, you know, these well driller rigs, they're not, they're not hidden in plain sight. You can easily see them. So we do follow up. We do check. But I have not had any, any persons reach out saying, hey, I want to submit an application. What is the process? Just inquiring of the tentative process, where we anticipate to go from here.
Thank you.
Supervisor Shabatia.
I just wanted to finish with one comment. In preparing for this meeting and reading the well hydrology report, which I feel we've come, made great strides in providing a better report. I remember starting with our cannabis reports where it was just a well report. It wasn't a hydrology report. So I appreciate the depth that was submitted. And the hydrology report speaks of nothing about it's a backup or it's not going to add more water. It speaks to this is a well. If it gets used, here's the impact that it can make. And I think that is kind of something I feel needs to be highlighted is it's not ignoring the potential use. You're telling us that it would be a backup for the current pump that you have at the other well that feeds quite a bit of water. But the fact is, this hydrology report is a standalone report to show and share the potential impact to that area. And so to me, that right there is what we need to look at. That way, it helps figure out what was that, what would that look like in the future? If it increases, here's the impact. And so that's, that's where I am with the support of staff's recommendation and ready to move forward. And appreciate you going through the correct strides to get to this point.
And I also, and I'm not to interrupt, but I also think that kudos are deserving to be sent to Mr. Scully, to your point. He's been, he's been upfront about what his plans are, what he's prepared the report. He's gone at a great expense to have the hydrology report completed. And I think he wants to do it right. And, and so I thank you for that. I want to also briefly talk about the report. And you heard Mr. Scully say that I called him and said, hey, your report is lacking on some information, specifically with regard to the specifics of the groundwater plan. And we both recognize that. You commented on it. And I think the overarching factor and why this is moving forward is this is an existing site with no new development plan, no increases. And I think that that is a significant point. For new developments, new uses, we probably would not, well, I'm not going to say probably, we would not accept this report if there was a brand-new use because it was relatively silent on the impacts related to the overarching requirements of the plan. And that was the reason why we're here today recommending approvals because it's an existing facility. If it was new, I think it'd be different.
The details matter.
Okay. Supervisor Green? No? Okay. All right, thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and open it up to any public comment in the room. Public input. If you have any public input, please come up front. You have three minutes.
Vice Chair, Michael Wagner. I am looking at all the different things that we've been through. Vice Chair, Michael Wagner. I am looking at all the different things that we've been through in a relatively short amount of time, from the hitch to the drought, to all these different aspects that you guys are juggling to try and balance appropriately. And for that, I, I commend you because it's a lot of different stuff. At the same time, I, I think you guys are going through the right processes, looking at the right things that should be analyzed, especially as the situation arises and looking at the details. This particular situation certainly doesn't constitute an addition to the strain on the water system. While Bruno has pointed out, in 50 years, could it be? I, I guess that's a potential or a possibility, but at the same time, relatively unlikely, right? Just because we have an airport doesn't mean we're going to have a 747 landing on it. And so we have to change the rules for that particular scenario. And so I think it's kind of similar, okay? And so with that, I, I, I do think that you guys have gone through the process. And ultimately, we're an agricultural community here and there's a fine line and a balance between taking care of the land and being stewards and then sitting on your hands and not doing anything. So appreciate the discussion and putting everything together. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else in the room like to make comment? Come on up, Joan.
Joan Moss, I'm appreciative of the Water Resources Department for having looked at all my public comments when I was a public comment giver for the groundwater sustainability plan. There is a report that I still have, and I thought it was a 2002 report, but it was a 2006 report, when there was a great deal of, of talk by the people on the committee about the geothermal water that they found in their toilets and in their water. I was wondering if, in fact, Mrs. Scully remembered the geothermal water in her bathrooms. So I'm going to get that out and bring it in again. And I want to look at the reports, the water reports, when, when the hydrology, I want to know how many times the hydrology person visited. And I want to know what year the water was tested. And I, I want to go to try to find that because it wasn't on what the Water Resources Department said on the report where they looked at all my public comments. And I remember specifically the report that I turned into Marina and she returned it back again. And I haven't been able to locate the 891-page document that, that had it. And I want to know where the 2006 report is on that 891-page document. I just want to make sure that we've all.
For the Scully property, so.
Yeah, it's a groundwater sustainability plan. I was the public comment giver. So I just wanted to double check the hydrology.
Today, we're talking about the permit, a well permit on the Scully property.
Yes, that's what we're doing.
So, yeah.
Okay, thank you so much. I wanted to mention these documents. I'm not a very good housekeeper and I'm not a computer whiz, but I do have a long memory. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Joan. All right. Anyone on Zoom, the hand up?
No hands on Zoom.
No hands on Zoom. So we'll close this item for public comment. We're going to bring this back and we are sitting as the Board of Directors for Lake County Watershed Protection District. And we need some action to be taken. Lloyd, did you have a comment?
Yes, just a point of clarification. The recommended action would be for the Board of Supervisors sitting as the Board of Directors of the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency to make a motion under A and B.
Well, quick question on that then, because I thought I heard Marina say, actually, it's mentioned in the caption and on the agenda. So I think I heard that the board sitting as the Watershed Protection District, that it's the district that sits as the board for the GSP agency. Is that correct? So I just, this is our first one. So whatever we're sitting as, I just want to make sure we lock it in because we're sitting as something for something.
So.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just real quick, and I'll look at Lloyd, our county council, for the, for the final say. But the water, the Board of Directors of the Lake County Watershed Protection District act as the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency, and we do have resolutions that tie to it.
So on the recommended action, if I change the verbiage, starting, staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors, if instead it says staff recommends, the Board of Supervisors sitting as the Board of, no. Sitting as what? The Board of Directors for the County Watershed Protection District?
I believe it'd be the Board of Directors of the Lake County Watershed Protection District sitting as the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency. And I see our CIO nodding their head. So I hope that's correct.
All right.
Correct?
That would be fine because the executive order makes specific reference of the, of today's determinations to come from the Groundwater Sustainability Agency.
All right, let me give this a shot. Sitting here today as the Board of Directors for the Lake County Watershed Protection District, which in turn is sitting as the Board of Directors of the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency, move to conclude that the proposed agricultural well for 2999 Sota Bay Road, APN 008-010-24 is not inconsistent with the Big Valley, not inconsistent with the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan. And it will not decrease the likelihood of achieving sustainability in the Big Valley Basin. And B, the extraction of groundwater will not interfere with the production and functioning of nearby wells, nor is it likely to create land subsidence.
Second.
All right, there's a motion to second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Thank you.
And just a little housekeeping on A, if you just said consistent instead of not inconsistent, that would probably.
We were matching the language, I believe, in the executive order.
Ah.
Okay, jumped around a whole bunch here, want to make sure. So we are on item, is it 11:00 AM? Yep, 11:09. We are on our 6.5 item, presentation of the progress and future plans of Lake County Health Services Department, implementation of the California Advancing and Innovation Medi-Cal CalAim Initiative. Are they online? There we go. And being presented by our Health Services Director, Jonathan Porting. Welcome, Jonathan. Can you hear us? Something's going on.
His microphone's not.
Is he unmuted on our end already?
It looks like he's unmuting himself, but it's not working.
Yeah, we still can't hear you, Jonathan. See, the microphone is unmuted at this point, but we're not getting anything through.
Check, check.
There you go.
Hey, good morning.
Just took a minute.
Thank you for accommodating that bit of chaos. Good morning, Board. Hello, community. I have a brief presentation for you. Actually, it's not brief. It's quite, quite detailed. So I hope it's informative about what CalAim is. And that to hopefully move it forward and cover partners in your state. So without further ado, I will share my screen and get started. All right, do you see a slide screen?
Yep, we can see it.
Great. So CalAim, CalAim is California Advancing and Innovating Medi-Cal. CalAim is designed to improve patient outcomes and reduce health disparities through several measures. And a couple key points I, terms or points I want to highlight today are whole person care, which promotes holistic approach to healthcare, focusing on both medical and non-medical needs. And it considers social determinants of health, like housing, food security, which can significantly impact health outcomes. Another one is ECM, enhanced care management, and in lieu of service, which I'll discuss to me, is financing. When we talk about ECM, we're talking about enhanced care management. We're talking about outreach and engagement, comprehensive assessment and things like care management plans, enhanced coordination to care, members, or members of family support, self-promotion and comprehensive traditional care. Health equity is another big spoke. And it aims to provide high-quality care to all. That's health equity, regardless of socioeconomic status, break, ethnicity. Also be touching on financial stability and with the end goal of CalAim and enhanced care management, increase life expectancy. So that shows if we have better access and early intervention in healthcare services, it can lead to improved health outcomes. That's just a general overview. So let's look at expanding this a little bit to get a little bit more in detail. So we're looking at main goals here. And I've identified three to keep it, try to keep it simple. So essentially what we're doing is trying to identify and manage member risks and needs through whole person care. And the idea is to allow us to address social determinants strategically. Two, move Medi-Cal to a more consistent and seamless system by reducing complexities and increasing flexibility, which allows providers to be able to meet their patients or clients where they're at. And lastly, is improve quality outcomes and drive delivery system transformation through value-based initiatives and modernization of system and payment reform. So to do this, we need to create design, identify core principles and have a well-rounded understanding of what CalAim is and how it can deliver it to our patients. So before I go on, I think it's important to identify seven population-focused examples that CalAim can address. So we're looking at individuals and families experiencing homelessness in our county, high adult utilizers of healthcare systems or services here in county, adults with serious mental illness, substance abuse disorders, adults at risk of institutionalization, go nursing facilities, residents who want to transfer back into the community from nursing facilities, adult and youth transitioning from incarceration, also known as justice involved populations, and children and youth up to the age of 21 years of age. I could go into detail with how these all break down and the qualifying factors, but I may want to save that maybe to answer questions later. So why implement CalAim? The way to do this would be to do this through a comprehensive needs assessment of Lake County's health outcomes and identify the limitations in our current system. And this is going to require things like data collection, analysis and interpretation of that to identify areas of improvement. And I will reference later that the contractor might be really helpful for this because the individual departments are going to have different needs and service provision lines when it comes to providing wrap service care for their client or patient. But it is a unique opportunity to improve the quality of healthcare for the beneficiaries in our county. Let's talk about key stakeholders. This isn't unique to public health. Other departments can leverage and most likely will leverage CalAim. That's going to be social services, behavioral health. Before Mr. Metcalf left for the islands, he did a short presentation on CalAim. And other organizations like community-based organizations, jail medical, and the jail, they can all engage with CalAim to do things like fee-for-service, wrap service, coordination, whole person care, et cetera. I would like to give a shout out to Elisa Behavioral Health for setting up a meeting with the jail and well path to get the ball rolling on one of those spokes. And it will be very successful. So for the Health Department, we need to continue to identify and engage stakeholders and critical partners. You see that I have a logic model and a strategic plan extending into 2025 based on our community health needs assessment and community health improvement plan that we just included about maybe a month ago, ready to launch and take this next step. So we need to now work with chip contractor, our Equity Department and the other directors. So let's figure a meeting, feedback loops as CalAim rolls out because it's ever-changing. And again, maybe we'll identify a contractor who can bring the spokes together to have it be a primary focus. So when it comes to roles and responsibilities, the, for example, the health services with an organization like Partnership Health Plan, could lead the strategy and execution of collaboration with potential contractor or partner. More specifically, and not to speak for them or on their behalf, but something like social services could ensure that the services reach the most vulnerable through CalAim based on our target population, community health improvement plan. Behavioral health could obviously provide mental health services. And SafeRx supports and community-based organizations could be essentially used for reaching out to community partners and their target populations to further engage them into the network. And the jail, upon release or while people are patients there at the facility, making sure that they have all the resources through our contractor well path to ensure upon release they're connected to one of these spokes, the service providers for wraparound services for care. It's simply how we come together to try to figure it out, to address the CHNA and the community health improvement plan. That's our goal. We always want to make sure it's correct. So when we roll this out, ideally, it's going to be a phased approach. And as I expressed, we have our initial assessment pretty much done. There is something that I'm a little bit hesitant on when it comes to jumping the gun and roll out. And a quote actually comes to my mind. I believe it's if we find ourselves on a committee or on a stakeholder group discussing the needs of a particular group, and when we look around, a certain stakeholder isn't represented, we should be highly skeptical of a conclusion that we reached. And so based on my review of the community health improvement plan, which was done absolutely amazing with our partners, I really feel like we need to lean a little bit more into our travel communities and get their feedback and bring them to the table so that we can ensure that we are meeting all of our key performance indicators for all populations, not just some. So with our challenges, challenges and solutions, time is going to be one of our biggest challenges with system integration. Right now, I've noticed that a lot of departments work off of different electronic record systems. I noticed that. I noticed that there isn't a point person for staff training in CAL-AM that I know of, right? To ensure continued and seamless delivery. When it comes to warm handoffs, I know that there are organizations like the Community Hub that are off somewhere. Stakeholders can call this hub. Then they'll be able to connect them to resources. But I'm really interested in the feedback loop of how that works so that we can integrate that into our future Community Health Needs Assessment to share in the success of improving the health disparities in the county. So that's going to be a challenge around how we strengthen our communication system in the county. Challenges will be addressed through things like risk assessments and management approaches. Again, I really feel like a point person is going to be needed to do this full-time. So we're trying to still figure that out, at least internally for our department, what that looks like full-time. But I think at the county level, we should really maybe try to consider that. And I just believe that this structure approach will create for a smoother implementation process, especially as deeper service changes or new service, service lines come out in different departments, it'll be good. So potential impacts. I think that that's the idea, right? Why are we doing this? What is going to be the benefit of time and effort? And so the successful implementation will significantly improve health outcomes for Medi-Cal beneficiaries in Lake County. It'll offer an opportunity for more equitable, efficient, and effective healthcare systems. And it will improve the lives of our residents and the well-being of our staff members, I believe, as a whole. And I believe that our KPIs will be more easily monitored and evaluated once we're able to quantify how the impact we're making through CAL-AM and seamless service delivery, wrap service care, equity of care is demonstrated through our efforts. So as far as timeline and next steps, full implementation of this, to have a seamlessly fluid running system, I believe is two to three years period, just because of the adjustments and policy change and allocation, funding, et cetera. So I put this out to a 2025 full rollout date where this pretty much hopefully is running itself. And what I ended up doing, which you can see here, is on the agenda, is I put together somewhat of a logic model of sorts to talk about, make them smart goals essentially. So and the research is needed, action is expected to be taken, objective key performance indicators, which we will revisit as we chart success. And that is all I have for you today.
Okay, Jonathan, thank you very much for your report. Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, thank you for the report. I know that this has been in the works since 2022. We're now in July '23. Just kind of curious, I know that there were some conversations between different departments coming together to kind of figure out how to position ourselves and how to better understand CAL-AM. Are those, I used to be invited to those meetings. I'm no longer invited, so I don't know if they aren't occurring. Are there departments, Social Services, the Sheriff, Public Health, Behavioral Health, are you still meeting to discuss the continued effort of what is collaboration? What is cooperation? What does data collection all look like? Or has that not continued in the same sense as it was before?
Oh, I just got back from leave, trying to leave for a month. So I'm still clearing my inbox and my emails. But I know we have a meeting with key stakeholders coming up here, I believe, on the 18th to at least start with Well Path and the jail and those services. Yes, to your first point that this rollout did start in 2022, but some of these didn't go live until January 2023. So I believe there's a lot of catching up to do on my part. But what I have seen is especially highlights and partners in Social Services, they know their stuff over there when it comes to CAL-AM. So I'm looking forward to connecting with them and hearing about changes and development and how I can work with them and how I can work together to continue moving the ball forward.
Thank you for that. And then you spoke a few times about a contractor. And from what I understand, your meaning of that is somebody to take the lead on the, again, the collaboration and cooperation between departments as well as stakeholders within the community. I don't know if the discussions, again, going back to those meetings where we were all coming together to kind of foresee what was coming and how to position ourselves. Has there been a decision that that is not a capability within the county departments already and that we need to look for a contractor? Or is it possible that within our staffing, and again, not looking only at your department, looking at the entire county, that we are capable to create that leading position or leading division to make sure that there is that cooperation and collaboration?
I think we're more than capable. That's not even a question. And I actually think it would be a great idea to have this be a designated department within the county because this is kind of sticky, like when it comes to funding, right? We're looking at fee-for-service and reimbursement. If this held, for example, if the whole thing was held, for example, in public health, then my concern would be, for example, like Social Services would do or Behavioral Health would do a service, right? And it would get billed to the wrong department. And that's what I really want to try to avoid. And I just don't know the logistics of how all that works yet. But yes, to your point, I believe that we do need to have and create some type of division. And I would really like to meet with the rest of the stakeholders and see if that is something that they would find valuable as well.
Okay. And I think one of my asks, and I'm, again, only directing based on the presentation, so it's not a direction to you. I think it's more of working with our admin and figuring out, what does that cost look like? Because do we have the capacity within our staff already? Do we need to have additional staff and set them aside to focus on CAL-AM but still fulfill our other programs and needs from the community? I'd like to know what that cost looks like, what that organizational chart looks like to make sure that we are having those conversations and making sure that collaboration and cooperation is happening. And I guess my last point is I feel like CAL-AM is something we should have always been doing. And I'm glad that we're being pushed into doing something like this. I know I just went to visit Arizona. They don't have a CAL-AM, but they are doing it in that county to a certain level, making sure that there's connections, especially when people are coming out of jail and so on and so forth. So I appreciate what's being accomplished by the mandate of CAL-AM. But I guess I personally would like to challenge us that our goal is not just equity in healthcare, but to get people out of Medi-Cal and out of poverty because the issue is poverty here. And I think that we're trying to recalibrate in the equity of how people with access to resources versus people without access to resources can be treated in a fair way when it comes to healthcare. If we can help people also get out of the poverty situation, then they would also rise up on the ability to access other things. So that is one of the challenges I would like to ask for whatever team we create, that it's not just providing services, it's to help to elevate the people we are serving so that we don't have to continuously serve them. They can become more independent. So I appreciate the presentation and the dialogue, but I think this is something that I would like to see come back to us on a regular basis to make sure that we track how this is moving. This is an important program. And I'd love to get some of the answers to some of the questions that I provided.
I'm in complete agreement with us, you know, staying in touch with this, coming back, you know, very often. It's a very large program and big lift for us to do, obviously. So yeah, I would appreciate the, maybe quarterly or something like that, reports coming back to us to look at these things for sure. So Supervisor Green, go ahead.
Yeah, obviously, we want to track this as best we can. I might disagree slightly with the existing capacity within the county, spanning multiple departments, as has been explained here today. And to their request, somebody needs to be on point. I totally agree. I just don't know who to put on point right now. Would it be Health Services, DSS, BH, some ad hoc committee thereof? And there are so many bullet points in this. And also so many ongoing initiatives, the Community Health Improvement Plan, Community Health Needs Assessment. So even if we craft this great unified vision, it is going to eventually drill down into whatever department has to meet whatever mandate in their particular program or programs. So I guess my takeaway today is this is a big lift, much bigger than Care Court. And to use that as an analogy, and I think we're kind of struggling to connect some of the dots on Care Court. I'm not saying we're not meeting. I'm not saying we're not making progress on that. I'm just not well-apprised of how we're doing. And I see some potential for struggle, just looking at the logic model and all the bullet points and stuff like that. So I appreciate this presentation as far as bringing us up to speed on what Health Services has been doing. I suppose we could ask for similar presentations from other departments on their initial steps. But I agree, maybe turn into CAO or have an department head take some internal meetings without us necessarily boxing them in. But I do have concerns about our existing capacity to tackle a project that's big. So I am open to the idea that one or more consultants can help facilitate at least the creation of that initial plan. And then we may have capacity to actually execute that plan. But I just am concerned about putting this level of responsibility for all these bullet points for a new program, trying to implement it in the next two to three years without really having a point strategy. So those are my comments.
Thank you. And obviously, this was a report only, just to keep us updated on where we're at in the process. So if there are no more questions from the board, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to the public for a public comment, public input.
I just stopped by. So Jillian Perillo, I was just really interested to hear about, there is a Community Health Improvement Plan that Jonathan said is finalized and wondering if we can get a copy of that? Because, I mean, I believe that the health issue here in this county is in pretty awful circumstances right now. So many people without being able to get a primary care physician. And the access is really quite difficult. And so I just really think it's a huge focus for this county. And I'm delighted that we're going to be moving ahead and putting more resources on it and making it a true priority. I agree with you, Bruno, that poverty is a big thing, but people being healthy and being able to work is really a part of getting out of poverty. So if we could see these reports that are coming out, that would be terrific. Thank you.
If it would appease the public and the board, I think it would be our Equity Department's honor to present that. But that's okay. And stakeholders. It's not, it wasn't just a Health Department effort. It was a heavy lift from a lot of stakeholders. So if the board is okay with it, I would like to reach out to the stakeholders and see if we could put something together to present that to the board and the public.
Would you request currently to just get a copy of the Community Improvement Health Plan? Or, you know, where to find these resources? I think that was the specific quest, but go ahead.
And I think that's a good thing for us to, again, continuously be faced with the reality of what we need to try to change in our community. And that is a challenge for us to take on. And the more we can see these reports and have them presented to the Board of Supervisors rather than just individuals. I know Hope Rising was a collaborative, it was a collaborative effort with stakeholders and Hope Rising to put the CHIP together. That has been accomplished. I've just been reading through it and looking through it and having a couple of meetings about it. So it is available, but making it more massively available, especially through the medium of the Board of Supervisors meetings, I think is a good thing so that we can speak about it and really kind of understand what are we doing about it? Because it's going to be the strategic plan for what it is we're trying to tackle with taking care of health inequities.
Okay.
So I agree with the presentation in the future.
Yep, we agree with that also. All right, so there you go. Absolutely, Jonathan, if you can help coordinate this and lead it, that would be great to come back at a future date. All right, Joan, come on up. Please state your name.
Well, I agree with the last speaker. And I would like to take one step further and say that I believe the reports should not only be available to the supervisors, but I should, I think they should be available to the public in the public libraries. Many of the people in poverty, you know, I have been in poverty. And it's very difficult to get things off the internet and in the public. And I think there should be public documents that people can look at in the public library that are not dependable, not dependent on a computer. Not everybody has a computer and access to the internet. And a lot of them, the people that don't have them, are in poverty. And so we need to include the people in poverty so they can have access to these reports without having a public computer. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Joan. Anyone in Zoom? Any hands up?
No hands in Zoom.
Come on up. Got another public comment, please?
Nikita Beck-Cassito, just a quick question on what is available at the moment and where we could access that information on the internet?
Jonathan, I don't know if you want to take it up or Bruno?
So I know the CHNA, Community Health Needs Assessment, is available online. I'm not sure if the Community Health Improvement Plan, often known as the CHIP, has been updated online. After this, I will talk with our social media team and see if they posted it. And if it is not posted, then I believe I heard the recommendation or direction given me was to put it on board agenda. So the CHNA is available. I'm not sure if the CHIP is, to answer your question.
Okay. Could you repeat a website to find that again?
Yeah, if you look at our Facebook website, our link. I'm not a Facebooker, I'm sorry. So I don't know the appropriate term to use. But what you could type in is Lake County, California, Community Health Needs Assessment. And it will most likely come up. And on our Facebook page, I believe it was posted at one point in time.
Thank you.
Did you have a comment, CAO? Okay.
I just have one quick comment. Laura McAndrew Samuel, Lake County Chamber of Commerce. If you go to the Hope Rising website, all of those reports are there, the Community Health Needs Assessment, and I believe the CHIP is also there. So it's just easy, easier access that way.
And I'm on the website. At this moment in time, I haven't been able to find the CHIP report. Definitely can find the CHNA, the Community Health Needs Assessment. And I will keep looking and see if I can provide that link over to admin and so we can post it on our social media. I know I've seen it, but I also know it was submitted to me for meetings, for review and final discussions. And those were just happening, I think, two or three weeks ago, so.
Okay, hopefully that answers the question.
The Community Health Needs Assessment. The Community Health Needs Assessment was like phase one, and Community Health Improvement Plan is essentially phase two, we take information from the CHNA and transition that information into action. And so that's why this is a really exciting time.
Any hands up in Zoom? No, no hands up in Zoom?
Nope.
All right, this was an informational item. Um, thank you very much, Jonathan, we look forward to the future agenda items as we're moving forward. Uh, and like I said, like you pointed out very well, all stakeholders in Lake County, so a big lift as we continue moving forward, so thank you very much for the update, and good to have, good to have you back from your leave.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, moving forward. We want to move forward, because I know we got, uh, I think that closes out all of our items on the agenda besides our calendars.
No, not quite, we have.
Oh, we do have 19 and 20?
Yes, and uh, they were in Zoom, if they're not, I, they do recommend that the, these two items move to the 18th. But I believe Kelly Page should be on.
She is.
So we have someone from Department of Social Services, and we're going to be pulling these items for another date, then, the 18th. Do we need a motion to that effect?
Let's see if she hears that.
Okay.
Kelly Page had her hand up.
Hello, Kelly. Go ahead, Kelly.
Good morning. Um, the reason why we need to pull the two items in question are due to some minor corrections that need to be made. We will be making those corrections and resubmitting the item.
So can't be fixed today, uh, to get them moved forward, just a question?
Uh, no, we need to make some corrections to the actual documentation.
All right. It needs to be reposted. 5.19 and 5.20, both Department of Social Services, uh, I will read them. Uh, I should read those at this point, right, Lloyd, or if I read them, then we're open up for public comment?
That is true. Uh, so if the, your board, if DSS is, um, Social Services is looking to just withdraw the items for a later date, that can take place uh, now without, with no further action by the board.
Okay, for, just for clarification, we'll be pulling 5.19, 5.20 for a future agenda items. Okay? So then that leaves, obviously, our weekly calendars.
Yes.
And then um, also, uh, closed session, so we'll go ahead and start with uh, weekly calendars, I'll go ahead and start with mine, obviously, uh, Board of Supervisors, uh, finishing up the meeting today, and then I will be, um, tonight, I do have the Clear Lake Chamber of, uh, Clear Lake Chamber of Commerce, uh, dinner at uh, Twin Bine Casino and Hotel, where I will be a speaker about the Middletown Rancheria, and um, I'll be attending that tonight. As of tomorrow, we had Lake Transit Authority Area Planning Council meeting was canceled, so kind of got an open calendar, and I will be uh, out. Um, I do have, uh, the Middletown Area Town Hall, I will not be attending, I will be attending an event at Robinson Rancheria, uh, presenting a congressional certificate on behalf of Congressman Thompson, uh, at the Robinson event, so I'll be doing that Thursday evening, and then uh, for myself, I will be uh, on vacation for a couple of weeks, uh, be returning the week of uh, the 28th, so I will be out, my calendar's real short here, and um, be moving forward with that. So that's, that's what I have to report today.
There you go.
Go ahead, Bruno.
All right, uh, I too will be uh, joining my colleague at Middletown Rancheria this evening, I want to listen in on his presentation and enjoy some good crowd with the Clear Lake Chamber of Commerce. And um, the tomorrow, um, for some of those that know, there's been some issues with animal control uh, in the city of Clear Lake, and so we're having a conversation with Lake County Animal Control uh, in the city of Clear Lake, just to see if there's any kind of relationship that we can build and see if we can help one another, we'll see what comes out of that conversation. I have a Technology Governance Committee that's meeting to continue our discussions on um, a multitude of things, we've been discussing email policies, we've been discussing uh, software upgrades, uh, that our auditor is looking at taking on, and um, looking forward to those conversations. Thursday, starting my day off at the judge's breakfast, uh, there's a Eel Dam, or was that moved? No, that's with Cal Trout, meeting to discuss the Eel Dam, uh, Eel River Dam removal. Uh, the title of that is really awkward on my calendar, but that's what that's about. Um, meeting for the Clean Water Program Management. Uh, also, there is a meeting uh, that looks to be about the uh, jail medical, I'm guessing. I don't know why it says MAC meeting, uh, but it's from the jail medical folks. Um, what's this other one I have? Also, uh, again, uh, we just talked about it, CHIP Action Team, Hope Rising Meeting, um, this Thursday as well, and I did just email Hope Rising just to check to see if we do have a final version that can be made available online. And then on Friday, uh, meeting with a union rep and discussing, um, or at least listening to what they want to convey. And uh, Monday, so far, looks clear, meeting with our CAO to prepare for a meeting on the 18th. That's all I have so far.
Thank you. Um, I'm, uh, Thursday, I'm hoping to uh, go to Robinson and attend the swearing in ceremony for Officer Wheeler, uh, still need to confirm that, uh, my email is back and forth, I've not confirmed that. I'm going to show up and press my face on the window and see if I can get in there. Friday, uh, Lake County Grand Jury is being discharged and impaneled at Superior Court, I'll be attending that ceremony. Um, I do want to give a shout out uh, to the very hard work put out by Lakeport PD and all our supporting agencies, including Lake County Sheriff's Office and probation. Uh, CAL FIRE investigators came out, it was a big crowd, uh, definitely good to see people out and enjoying themselves, definitely not great to see the amount of illegal fireworks that were discharged uh, in the city and outside the city, as is happening uh, with far too much frequency. So I I just want to give a shout out, they really brought the house in to have a, uh, the best event they could, and uh, and their efforts will pay off, and I'm looking forward to the debrief from uh, Lakeport PD uh, on the number of incidents, there were some, including a house fire, but uh, it was a great effort for a difficult situation, where we do have such a disconnect between the city and the unincorporated county as far as fireworks. Uh, and last thing, this unsolicited shout out, I don't want to replace anything DSS is doing, but if you're a Medi-Cal patient, speaking of Medi-Cal, this big yellow envelope, if you've got one in the mail, it's super, super important that you pay attention to it. Um, it has been just a couple of years, and because of COVID and all that, Medi-Cal people were just kind of cruising along for a while. Uh, it's interesting, I'm probably the only sitting supervisor in the state that is still on Medi-Cal, and I'm looking very forward to being disenrolled through this latest process. Um, but since I got my pack, and I wanted to highlight, if you get a big yellow envelope, first thing first is this first sheet that had the address, don't throw that away. Why? Because the reverse side of that sheet is where the magic return reply envelope gets its magic, because if you see the envelope they send you, there's no address on that, so you don't intuitively know where to send it. But if you hold on to that first cover sheet and fold it in half, you're going to have a lovely, truly self-addressed reply envelope, and what they're really looking for, as is called out in the form, look at the little date up here, you do need to reply by a certain date, or they're going to start some actions to disenroll you. Uh, but if you go to one of the many, many workshops that DSS is putting on around the county, they can help you with this stuff, there's phone numbers listed on this cover sheet of the application form, but what they're really hoping to do with this yellow mailing is get Medi-Cal people who wish to continue their benefits to sign and date these forms, get them mailed in so they can timely process them, and that's important, so you can do that without uh, discontinuing your benefits. You're going to get a lot of other stuff in there, and the county has no control over that, you're going to get voter registration forms, rights and responsibilities, it's all good reading, but for this heavy lift, we've been out of the groove for many years now because of COVID, and DSS has right now embarked on a very major, major effort to make sure that any person in our county who has Medi-Cal benefits continues to receive those important benefits. And another reason I'm highlighting it today is just people uh, sometimes have stigma, and they uh, may be reluctant to enroll or provide information so they could get these important benefits. Um, these benefits are here for all of our residents, so I don't care how old you are, I don't know, care what demographic you are, if you are eligible for Medi-Cal, please, 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 uh, avail yourself of all the resources out there that are basically out there to help you, right? So I I'm very grateful and and blessed that I have now plowed through a career path that allows me to leave this, but I I want to express publicly, I'm very thankful for the many years I was covered by Medi-Cal. And I encourage anyone in our county who needs help to reach out to help, get the help, we have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Green. Okay, with that, that'll end our calendars, we're going to go ahead, and we do have closed session items, I'm going to go ahead, Lloyd?
Vice Chair Sam, we'll be withdrawing a closed session item 8.2.
Okay.
Today.
So we'll read the other closed session items, the question I do have on closed session items, uh, timeframe, uh, I'd like to ask the board first, do you think we could push through on these items? All right, I just wanted to confirm that with everybody, uh, so I'll go ahead and read the items, uh, we will take a break, so everybody can take a break and then come back, but 8.1, Public Employee Appointment pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957B1, Interviews for Behavioral Health Director, Appointment of Behavioral Health Director. Uh, we have pulled 8.2, uh, and then we have 8.3, uh, which is the Public Employee Appointment pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957B1, um, Interviews for Public Health Officer or Appointment of a Public Health Officer. So those are our closed session items, and 8.2 will be pulled. So with that, we're going into closed session.
After a break?
After a break, yeah. Got time for a break here, yeah, so 10 minutes, probably got 10 minutes or so. Okay, we want to reopen the meeting, we're going to be coming out of closed session at 12:51. Um, was there any action to be taken out of closed session?
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, um, I would like to make a motion to appoint Elise Jones as Behavioral Health Director, subject to approval of the State of California Department of Healthcare Services, and make that effective August 1st, 2023, and she will start at Step 3.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all, there's a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, excellent. All right, with that, that is our last item, an action item for today's meeting, we'll be closing the meeting again at 12:51.